I.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next one, approval for the July 21st, 2022 minutes.
Move approval of the, I believe that's where my name is misspelled throughout the minute, so if that could be corrected.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, did you, Rick, did you say?
I'd move the, uh, the minutes with the, that correction.
Correction.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, second, third. Well, Elaine was a little faster on the ball than I was.
We'll give you this one. We got one more to do, so you can, you can, you can approve this one.
Okay, you're warmed up.
Yep, everybody's ready now. August 4th, 2022 minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, forgot to finish voting. All in favor of the July 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next one, the last one, August 4th, 2022 minutes. Anybody gonna?
I move.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I'm working my way. So, the next one is, is the meeting open to the public? If wherever, I see we have one. I don't know if we have anybody on Zoom tonight or anything like that?
We do not have anyone participating by Zoom.
Okay. So, I appreciate if we could try to keep to our three minutes, so we can keep the moving, the meeting going. Um, John Smalls?
There's John.
Address, please, the usual.
He's got the pattern now.
I moved.
Maplewood.
You're still coming to visit us, so that's a good sign, isn't it?
They didn't check me at the doors.
No, that's true. All right.
Uh, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. Uh, this subject is, goes back to, I think, maybe even a June meeting. You had people that appeared here from Penn Place that complained about, uh, failure to follow whatever you had passed. Uh, I guess it's five years ago, and that, uh, Schiffsky's was not complying with it. They poured their hearts out to you, and I thought to myself, why are they here? Uh, Planning Commission doesn't have an army to enforce, uh, anything, and no one said anything to them about the fact that maybe you want to take this up with the city council, because we're not the venue. Because I brought something up in the meeting that you had to take care of 70, 71, 70, uh, Eldridge, and I was shut down by the co-chair saying, we don't deal. I was talking about the prices they were paying for this. It was outrageous, and the extra costs and whatnot, and I was told, nah, we don't take care of things like that, so, you know, goodbye. Anyway, uh, as, uh, when their presentation was over, I went back, uh, out with them, because I remember the meeting that took up this subject about Schiffsky's, and they were, uh, I don't know, doing something with their machinery. They were expanding or something to that effect. And one of the people that appeared said that he would put his white socks on the window sill, and every day he would check his white socks, and the white socks would be dirty because of the air quality that was coming from Schiffsky's. So, when I said to the people, is that guy still around, and how are his white socks? And they said, uh, I don't think he lives there anymore, and one of them said, no, he died. So, evidently, that's what happens when you make complaints or whatever. It never comes forth. But I was, again, surprised that you didn't say something to the people that this was not the venue for it. So, I had to wait until, with all these council meetings that came up in August, or didn't come up in August, because of National Night Out, you have a long time before you can get before the council that is in a special meeting to get up and say something. So, at the last council meeting, I said to the council in this position that I'm now standing, uh, anyone here heard of the complaints by the individuals from Penn Place? That was, that they made a complaint to the Planning Commission? No one except Councilmember Wong. And she brought up that it was an air quality problem, and you could just see the pain on the faces of all the council members when the mayor said, next subject? And so, I don't think they've ever had their, um, uh, problem addressed. And I think that the Planning Commission ought to go through the minutes, find out who the person was that wrote down that they wanted to speak, and say, we're sorry, we didn't tell you that your being up here was a waste of time, because it never went any further than us. Because the council, based on what I had a reaction from the council at the last meeting, they knew nothing about it. So, that's my suggestion, a letter to those people that says, you're sorry. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right. Iron, so, um, I'm gonna move on to the approval, oops, sorry, open the meeting, now, public hearings. So, we'll, we'll discuss, maybe after our hearings, if we want to discuss that any farther, as far as further, I should say, as far as what we talked. I know we were gonna look at it from staff, just to see what we did, so, and that's what I'm assuming. So, let's, uh, get through everything, and then we can talk.
Do that later.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Yeah.
So, it's duly noted. We, I know that, uh, we talked about it, so we'll find out what happened. But I, thank you so much for following up on that, and I knew you did. Thank you. All right, next thing is public hearing. The public hearing to consider the planned unit development, uh, 2503 through 2517, 7th Avenue, Lily Building. Public hearing is to consider, um, com- comprehensive plan amendments to creating the density bonus and for a certain land in the downtown, so, do you wanna call up the?
Well, we'll do that. Just do A first.
A first?
We'll do them one by one.
Okay. Oh, that's right, I mentioned, you mentioned that, I'm sorry. I'm still in training, so my apologies.
So, you bring staff up for I.
Staff for A, item A, yes.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank, welcome.
All right.
Yep, something just popped up on the screen for you there?
We just have to wait.
Yep. Yep. If we can have the front screen towards the council also, or the commissions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And then there's, uh...
Well, can you see it up here?
Yes, he did it already, yep. And if you want to adjust your microphone and make sure that we're good.
Oh, look, it's working, okay.
Technology, it's great, but it works.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, tonight, on the agenda, we have a proposal from Mr. Jim Laval of TJL Development, who has submitted applications for a planned unit development, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a zoning text amendment. He has a purchase agreement to redevelop four lots at the south, sorry, the northeast corner of 7th Avenue and Helen Street, and the redevelopment site is a .74 acre site, all four of them together. So, Google Images, um, ex- depicts the existing conditions, and as you can see, the existing structures include the former Lily Newspaper Building, a vacant salon, and a mixed-use building with a residence and a commercial tenant. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct a new, uh, mixed-use building with 75 market-rate apartments, seven market-rate live-work units, and about 1,500 square feet of commercial space for lease. Tenant amenities will include three outdoor patios and community rooms, and the project is designed to give a nod to the historic downtown, and will feature historic imagery as art panels on the building's exterior. Staff reviewed the proposal against zoning standards for the MU1 district, and found that land uses are either listed as permitted or conditional, and all of them can be allowed with a requested PUD. The proposed density is 110 units per acre, and a total of 93 off-street parking stalls will be provided. The parking meets, um, an exception in the zoning code that allows for buildings in the mixed-use district that are mixed-use buildings to have a parking rate of one space per dwelling. Uh, the building meets zoning standards, uh, except for the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, the usable open space and building height. So, per the zoning code, the lot area should be 1,980 square feet per dwelling unit, which, when you multiply that by the 82 units, gets you to be, um, 162,000 square feet approximately. So, the lot area is deficient by 130,000 square feet, so that's one of the reasons why the PUD is before you, for the flexibility on that item. And the, uh, building height proposed is 57, uh, feet, six and three-quarter eight, three, three-eighths inches, um, when the max is 50 feet that is allowed. And finally, the usable open space is 10,297 square feet, which is less than the 20,500, which is required for the 82-unit structure. Uh, so, based on our review, staff determined that in order to move forward with the project, um, some flexibilities are needed, density, um, in the lot area, building height, and open space, and each of these can be provided by the requested planned unit development, the comp plan amendment, and the zoning text amendment. Okay, so, then I've got the presentation broken down into those three different areas of requests. So, first is the PUD analysis. So, on the screen, you have the purpose of the PUD, and so, the ordinance specifies that in order to be eligible for a PUD, the site must have either two or more principal structures or uses on a single parcel, um, or it must contain a multi-use structure, such as commercial intermixed with residential uses, and this proposal meets both of those eligibility requirements. The ordinance also outlines the purpose of a PUD is to grant flexibility in zoning to create a project that will meet planning goals and a public benefit, and staff are in the process, um, of negotiating with the developer on that potential public benefit that would be in exchange for the PUD overlay, and that would be included in a development agreement. So, the over, sorry, the ordinance also lays out a number of criteria by which to evaluate a proposed PUD. They're, um, listed one through 11 on the screen. Staff reviewed the proposal against each of those in the report, and I'll kind of go through them one by one. So, the first criterion is whether the proposal is consistent with your planning documents. Uh, your comprehensive plan designates the property as downtown mixed-use, which is intended to enhance North St. Paul's small-town and pedestrian-friendly atmosphere, while encouraging redevelopment that is historic, sorry, that is consistent with the historic character. And in that, uh, downtown mixed-use land use designation, vertical and horizontal mixed-use is encouraged, and residential density is expected between 12 and 22 units per acre. They use the, the word "expected," not "required." I just wanted to point that out in your comprehensive plan. Uh, so, the proposal is consistent with your land use designation. However, as mentioned earlier, it's exceeding the density that's intended for that land use. So, we also looked at it against the downtown design manual, um, which suggests that downtown development should be constructed with a sense of scale that's in proportion with the existing streetscape and ensure pedestrian and friendly environment. Uh, the proposed development is a bit larger in scale compared to some of the adjacent structures, where many of them are one to two stories. However, the architectural design generally appears to the downtown design manual guidelines in terms of window spacing, facade design, um, reduction of blank wall area, and then providing a high, a variety of high-quality exterior materials. And then also, we looked at your recently approved downtown master plan, redevelopment master plan, um, and that document encourages underbuilding, parking, public art, and redevelopment that, that transitions vertically, um, the one-story buildings, uh, up to two to three stories in height. So, the project meets the parking and art, public art goals, but exceeds the height guideline. However, I have it, um, outlined on the screen, so that height guideline, um, is that purple area, and so, it's right next to the area where up to five-story buildings are encouraged. So, it's staff's opinion that the height is acceptable in this location and can potentially help jumpstart additional, um, higher-density projects. Oops. And it lost my mouse, there it is. Okay, of note, um, the redevelopment master plan also includes a strategy to convert Sepulveda Boulevard into a living street, and one of the recommenda- recommendations is to, um, encourage buildings, um, off of Sepulveda to have entrances, entrances off of that boulevard. And the proposal, as submitted, does not, um, have a pedestrian entrance on Sepulveda at this time. However, the applicant has expressed the possibility of updating, uh, that design to include an entrance near Sepulveda and Helen. Uh, that was discussed at the city council meeting last month. Uh, finally, we also looked at the proposal against the draft housing study that was prepared by Max Field Research and Consulting, uh, for downtown North St. Paul, and that study predicts between 130 to 150 market-rate apartments will be needed to meet your housing demand between now and 2030, and this proposed development would fulfill about half of that predicted market demand for this type of housing product. So, the next few slides, we'll look at the other 10 criteria for the PUD, um, review. Uh, first is density. So, as mentioned, the proposed density is 110 units per acre, and increasing the density in the downtown is a stated goal in your redevelopment master plan. Uh, the proposal is in alignment with that. Um, the PUD ordinance also allows a den- for a density increase in cases where it is compatible with the comp plan and the goals of the city. And as we already stated, the comprehensive plan caps the density in the downtown mixed-use at 22 acres. Therefore, we're, um, also moving forward on that comprehensive plan amendment that we discussed to increase the potential density at that site. Also, as mentioned, the proposed uses include apartments, live-work units, and commercial. Two of the apartment units are proposed on the first floor, on the Helen Street side, and those uses are permitted. Um, all of the uses in the building are permitted as either conditional or permitted by right in the land use table. Of note, the table specifically calls out residential units that are, um, over top of non-residential uses as being permitted in the downtown, but it doesn't specifically address first-floor residential. Um, but all uses combined, uh, in the building support the intent of the mixed-use district, which is to create a vibrant urban environment that brings compatible land uses and public amenities together at various scales. Uh, parking is underground and on the first floor, and each, um, each parking area has a separate garage door off of Sepulveda Boulevard, and as indicated earlier, a total of 93 stalls will be provided, uh, which is one per dwelling, um, which meets the one-per-dwelling, uh, standard, and the developer has also indicated that bike parking will be provided at a rate of one space uh, for each parking stall that's underground or underbuilding. Uh, the developer has also submitted a landscaping plan that depicts, um, uh, a series of, uh, landscaping. So, the plan calls for three ginkgo trees, three honey, honey locusts, and three ornamental, as well as numerous shrubs, grasses, and perennials around the base of the building, and it also, um, proposes screening around the electric, electrical transformers, so that meets the zoning code. Utilities within the PUD must be placed underground. Uh, the developer and the public works department are working on that, uh, feasibility of doing that and the cost share of bearing the existing utilities, and that is gonna be part of the redevelopment project potentially. Uh, regarding traffic, the developer submitted a trip and parking generation analysis uh, that states that the building circulation and access plans do not create congestion or safety concerns for residents, um, the project residents or the general public, and the report concludes that the proposed development would create approximately 286 new daily trips, which would not, um, would not be expected to overburden the existing transportation system. So, in terms of architectural design, uh, the applicant indicated in their narrative that the building materials and the design have been inspired by the historic use and character of the downtown. The dark metal siding in the corner of the building is specifically inspired by the manufacturing history of the area. Uh, the C shape of the building with the opening on 7th Avenue on the upper floor is intended to provide a large patio area to overlook the downtown, and the ex- uh, building exterior includes articulation and windows instead of a mass wall and materials, um, such as brick, stone, and metal siding, lap siding, and concrete masonry. Uh, also indicated earlier, the building height exceeds the maximum allowed, which is 50 feet. Um, the building is, is designed with the first floor that has a 20-foot height and, um, versus the typical seven to 10-foot for residential uses, and that additional height is gonna accommodate the commercial space and the live-work units, uh, which in combination with the underground parking and the underbuilding parking, um, is gonna increase that four-story building height beyond the 50 feet to just over 57 feet. Unfortunately, your PUD ordinance doesn't allow height as a building, or, I'm sorry, as a, a flexibility for zoning, so, that is another reason why we're requesting the, um, the textament, textament for this project. Um, I also mentioned that the project requires flexibility and open space requirement, giving, given the density of the, of the project and the size of the lot. The open space that is provided includes interior gather, gathering places on the first, second floor, and the fourth floor balcony areas, and those will be available for residents of the project. Okay, moving on to the analysis of comp plan amendment.
We're gonna wait for that part? We're gonna?
Oh. I don't mind. I'm gonna leave it like that.
Yeah, we're gonna break it in three separate, thank you so much.
Let's see.
Anybody have any questions on the staff report that we have so far? I busted it with three sections, 'cause it's quite a bit.
I'd...
Would the applicant like to provide any feedback so far with this part? Just state your name, please.
Good evening, Chair and Commission members. My name's Jim Laval, uh, with TJL Development, and I have Jeffrey with Momentum Architects. I'm really excited to be here. I've been, uh, lived my whole life in the Twin Cities and started playing in the apart multifamily, uh, space in 2008, and since then, I've done about 2,200 units. Um, these kind of sites here, um, are very, very difficult to find, and, I mean, this, this little jewel here, so we're really excited to try and create something that's great for us and the community and everybody else. So, we'll just stand for questions, and I don't know if there was, I missed a bit of the presentation, and thanks for great staff report, it was really thorough, so.
I do have one about the staff report, uh, and I actually mentioned it, the staff, I want to bring it up in public, uh, and that is the landscaping portion. Was this run by this, this, my, it's my understanding this was not run by the city forester, and so, that's something that I think, when these types of items are considered in the future, they should be run past the people that have the expertise. The, what kind of got my attention was that you recommend three ginkgo trees in that area, and ginkgos are a problem if they are female. Uh, they tend to have a seed that is noxious to many people and sometimes, uh, in- encourage people's allergies, and the seeds are dangerous to pets. So, uh, my understanding is a male tree does not have that problem, but it's not something that I am an expert in, and so, that, that's why I say that this type of thing should be run past the experts and not just considered by any old staff member in the future. So, and I would like to recommend that, based on my understanding, and of course, I, as I say, I'm not an expert, so I could be mistaken on this, but from what I've read, that it, we qualify that to recommend as, as male ginkgo trees and not just any old tree.
Well, you've taught me something tonight, thank you. Also in the audience, we have Patrick Sarver. He's with Civil Site Group, and they have an architectural, or, excuse me, a landscape architect on staff, and we were cognizant about, uh, what trees we picked from the shape and how they grew, um, and canopy types and colors and things like that, but I, again, I didn't know anything about female and, and trees, and so...
It's just something, as a city planner, I've run across it before, so...
If there's any possibility that we're gonna cause harm to a animal or any, or a human, obviously, we'll, we'll certainly change that to another species that maybe we could get recommendations from, from you for.
Right, it, yeah.
I don't know the distinctions, so I'll have to find out.
Check to see if it's a male.
And I don't either, and that's just why I recommended that somebody that has the knowledge of it should, you know, review that kind of thing, but, thank you.
Yeah, sure, for sure, yeah.
Any other questions, everybody?
Just, we're just commenting on the building portion of?
Yeah, we're starting in three sections, that way we can, do you have any question?
I, I mean, I...
If I may offer to, and not to interrupt you, um, we've gone through a process where we engage the community, and, uh, one of that was, one of the last meetings we had was with the city council on a workshop basis, and as Brandy mentioned, there was a, a desire to have a pedestrian connection that would go north of the project at Sepulveda, or, you know, along Sepulveda, and we did make those changes on a concept forum. I don't know if you'd like to see those now or later, or...
Are they, are they different from what we're seeing in the packet?
We made a small change to the, to the first-floor plan.
Yes.
That we could get up on the screen for you. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll just, I, just a few, I guess, more comments than questions. I'll just, just a few, I guess, more comments than questions. It's a really beautiful project, and I think it's, it's definitely the type of project that we would want in North St. Paul, and I appreciate, you know, your, your use of brick is, is great. I mean, you know, I know that's, it's certainly a more costly material to use, but I appreciate, you know, you're not even just putting a plane of brick there, you're actually using, you know, pilasters and making that, that street facade feel a lot more activated, because it's, it's a long building, so it could start to feel like that whole block is just kind of one thing, but I think it's successful in capturing that sort of retail feeling along that whole, that whole facade. And I, you know, I think my only comment would, which, you know, Brandy kind of mentioned already, it would be great, this is, this is such an important proper, series of properties to, you know, kind of set the tone for Sepulveda Boulevard. If that's, if we're, if we really want it to be a pedestrian-friendly or a more activated street instead of just an alley, it would be great to, you know, try to pull some of that residential around the corner a little bit, and I know you might be losing some parking spots by doing that, but I think could be a really great tone to set for the whole rest of the block and, you know, moving forward if more projects start happening down the street. But it's, it's a really beautiful building, and I appreciate the design, it's really nice.
Well, that was, and thank you for your comments, that was probably the biggest comment we got back from several community stakeholders, is to get that historic brick character on that main part of the facade, so it was work by a lot of people or suggestions by several people that helped us get there.
Yeah, yep.
It's actually, we took inspiration from the Earhoff Organ Manufacturing Building, and Kenny did a fantastic job using some of those design elements on the facade of the building. So he used the limestone base, he used the slender, tall
Yep.
individual windows. And if you look on page X02 in your packet, I don't know if you can see that or not, but you'll see the, the black and white image of the Earhoff Organ Company, which then went on to make pianos, which then made, went on to make lundskis and toboggans and things like that. There you go, it's in the upper right-hand corner. That's where our main inspiration came from.
Yeah.
Then the secondary inspiration, like Brandy had mentioned, was the industrial feel of that corner, because you had so much different industry in this town, it was very varied. And so we tried to make that corner something special, because that's, that's your gateway to your downtown.
Yeah, absolutely.
Unfortunately, Brandy took, did a great job on the presentation and took away all my talking. I did want to mention that we originally had the C shape of the building opposite of what it's laid out as, and Jim wanted it the reverse way, and so what that really did was it put towers on the corners, but it dropped it down to a two-story volume in the center and really took that mass down
Yep.
to a nice walkable scale.
Yeah.
So I really, I mean, tip my hat to you, that really, really made for a very nice, interesting building, much more interesting than what we, what we originally presented.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if we can go back to the X03...
Is that this way? No?
There you go. The lower right-hand corner image shows the first floor, the street, the street floor. And in the upper left-hand corner of that plan, you'll see a mustard-colored room that is different than our original presentation.
Sorry, you're...
Correct. What we did was we took the comments from the, the work session, and we, we tried to engage Sepulveda better. And so that is a fitness room right now. Now, it could also be a dwelling unit, but right now it's a fitness room. And the idea was, on that corner of Sepulveda and Helen, we had historic images that you might have seen on this page here of the trolley and the old historic downtown, because Sepulveda was the Trolley Street, that's where the trolley ran. And so we had a large image of that on that corner, and then we also had a large image of the downtown on that corner as well, on Helen, this, this yellow one here. But with the glass being on that corner for the exercise or the fitness, we can also put some finish on that glass to emulate these images. So we can still do that, whether it's a metal screen on it, or it's a, or it's a film on it that shows these historic images.
So has the elevation changed a bit on this corner, so this would be activated, but the jet's out of that heart, but still have a visual of it here, so it'd be eyes people going back and forth and getting another pedestrian entrance coming out of that side of the building, so that's can come out and go right out of Sepulveda and vice versa.
Yeah.
So, so you gained pedestrian access, you gained a facade that has more glass, if you will.
And we lost two parking spaces.
And, and you potentially can still maintain the concept of the mural, depending on how the glass is treated.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, the mural will be broken up with mullions, but we do it a lot.
My people on their exercise bike would appreciate that on there.
They might.
Yeah, a vinyl film or something is, yeah, a lot of good opportunity.
The translucency of the translucence.
Yeah.
So that, those are the main changes.
Those are the only changes, aren't they?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Getting back to Commissioners Wise's comments too, the, on that first, let me go back to that, on Helen, there are two dwelling units that wrap the corner, I don't know if they're very depicted.
That was...
Yep. There you go, that'll work.
But if you see towards the northwest corner of that, we're facing Helen, there's a blue shade and a yellow shade. Those are intended to be dwelling units wrapped in that corner.
Yeah, and I like that a lot, it's...
And they have...
Have a walk-up unit like that.
Yeah, and they have a walk-up.
Yeah.
Yep.
Those will be very desirable because of the, the dog walkers and things like that.
Yep.
Eric? Greg, would you like to...
I guess I'll wait.
Do you have, there's no specific bike room in the, on the level one, right?
We, in all the projects that we do, we do minimally bike racks and parking stalls, you're probably familiar with many strategies.
Yeah.
We usually do a bike room that has that bike tool that's got the pump on it, and the tool and the little key, you know?
Yep.
These plans don't depict specifically that yet, but when plan, plan advancement will be incorporated.
There's lots of utility rooms down here that you can find home for.
And it's, you know, just the, the gateway trail is such a huge...
Well, that's one of the reasons we're here, we love that.
Yeah.
Huge amenity, yeah, for sure.
Matter of fact, we have to have that.
Yep.
Attraction for tenants.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. If we get to the next portions, you want to come up, we'll, we'll go from there, but we hope to come in up.
Thanks, great. Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, we're lucky that we have such talent on our planning commission here with architects and everybody else's backgrounds, so that is, that is a blessing for North St. Paul to have such a good commission. I'm gonna close the portion now, oh, wait a minute, open now, I'm sorry. Open for input portion.
Public input.
If there's anybody that's for the public that would like to speak. If you wouldn't mind giving your name and address, that would be great.
George Sin, 2411, 11th Avenue East. Speaking for the Weber family who owns the property across the street, they're upset to see a 57-foot-tall building going in downtown. I don't have, I don't believe they have a problem with an apartment building, but the height is a tremendous issue. It was a tremendous issue when Gary Mulcahy proposed a building where Burwell finally built, and his building was going to be five stories on Margaret Street. He couldn't pull the deal together because that was right at the crash of 2008, 2009. They haven't addressed the hard-surface water runoff and where that's gonna go with this building. I think that's an issue that needs to be talked about. Given the car shows on Friday nights, another 90 cars parking in their, in that building are going to find issues getting in and out of downtown if they need, wanted to leave on Friday night. It's been a bone in my side ever since the beginning, but it is what it is, and it's I like the idea of the apartment building, I just think it's plainly too tall for that piece of downtown. You're probably not in my lifetime, or anybody on the council's lifetime, going to see the post office go away, or Newman's, or the Schleck Building, or Roddy's go away and be replaced by a similar building. They'll cost too much to take out to, to do that, but I would like to see them work a little harder to come a little closer to their 50-foot mark, but to have a loft on the first floor, street-side, anything less than 20 feet, you don't meet the code requirements, so when you hang duck work and whatnot, but that's my two cents.
Could you tell me again who the neighbor was that you thought would have the trouble with the, the height, and where are they located?
Weber Inc. We're in the Franklin Center Building, the old Weber Supper Club Building.
Okay, so further down?
Right across the street.
North?
To the west.
Across Helen, to the west.
To the west, okay.
To the west.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Chris Monge, 2596 Poplar Avenue. I have lived in North St. Paul my whole life, except for five years after college, and anyway, it was really fun to see the rendition of that building. It's beautiful. It's almost too nice for North St. Paul, because we have some not-lovely buildings, and what's there now is terrible. I did, went on a little bike rack yesterday and spent about 20 minutes just circling around, I walked the, the lot. It's disgusting. It looks like some abandoned sad place, a photograph you'd see of Detroit. There is this little section in North St. Paul that looks like the sad, abandoned Detroit, and that's in our beautiful North St. Paul. So it needs to be fixed. It looks terrible, and I'm super excited at how beautiful this looks. It's not just one big flat building. It's really beautiful and appealing, and it's kind of artsy, and it's a great entrance now that we have our street figured out, it's nicer, it's smooth, it's got some trees in the middle, it's really lovely. And then it arrives to the main town to this giant hairy wart on the left side. We need to fix it. It's terrible. It serves nobody, and I'm really excited that there is someone who is willing to risk their capital and build something that serves our community. I'm also a real estate agent, so I represent a lot of clients who are struggling sometimes to get homes, and it's very competitive. Sometimes for every offer that my clients, when I represent sellers, accept, there's 10 to 20 families who didn't get a home, and their lease is up, and they're tired of their neighborhood. Well, North St. Paul is a safe place to live. We have a lot of people who are leaving other communities that aren't so safe anymore, and they would like to live in North St. Paul. I'm a big promoter of North St. Paul. I always tell prospective buyers, North St. Paul is a great place to live, it's safe, we have a great police department here, we have great services. When there's just a couple inches of snow, I'm gonna plow the street for you, unlike in some cities where you might see a plow four or five times in a season, and that's it. Taxes are lower here. This is a great community for entry-level homes, where people who are buying their first home can get a chance to live. We don't have enough places to live, even for renters. Now, my goal in life is not to get everyone to be a renter and pay someone else's mortgage. I don't think that's how you build wealth and change your family tree by continuing to be a renter, but there is a season in life where that is what you need, not what you would like, it's what you need. We own rental property. When we put our house up for rent, two years ago, we had 34 people apply and ask to be, you know, to rent our home. Last year, we had 110. 110 families came to us, some of them had some desperate stories. There are not enough places to live. So thank you for changing this ugly hairy wart on the corner that serves nobody and putting in something that will bring economic development. I think putting a business in North St. Paul is a little risky. There's not really a lot of reasons to come downtown. It's getting better. I now have three reasons to come downtown to North St. Paul. I used to have just the post office, so it's getting better. I don't know that the investors of Max Diner would be so willing to invest all of that capital into a city that had no human beings in it. You need to have people, you need to have people living in downtown to bring economic prosperity and commerce to happen in our city. We have a great little downtown, Woodbury doesn't have a downtown, Oakdale doesn't have a downtown. We are very fortunate that we have a place where we can gather and have economic activity and meet your neighbors. So thank you for making it look better, because it needs some help over there. So it's looking really good. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Hello, Commissioners. I am Carrie Bleece. I live at 2887 Lake Boulevard, and I have not lived in North St. Paul my whole life, but this is the place where I have lived the longest. So this is my adopted hometown, and I do agree with Chris that I think North St. Paul is a really great place to live, and I'm really excited about this next opportunity. So I wrote down some notes when the staff member was speaking about the things that will have to be flexible on, and one of them happened, it was the phrase "open space", so there must be some open space requirement, and then the, they were saying that it's going to be open space for residents, not necessarily an open space for community. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. And then the, the height differential, so it's, right now, my understanding is that 50 feet would be the maximum, and then we're looking for a variance to have it go to 57. But then, in the future, future of North St. Paul, other lots could be taller, like down the street? Like, hmm, in the future, future? Is that what I'm understanding?
No. Maybe but, is the maximum for the zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Unless, unless a flexibility is granted throughout PUD, and whatever other project would have to go through the same process.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I think it's a lovely building. I really enjoy the historical aspects of the brick and how much window there is, and how the windows are breaking up that facade, the step-back makes it feel like it's not this huge massive cube sitting on the block. So I think that's a really nice aspect as well, so when you're, you're walking by, you don't feel like it's just towering over you. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last call for public input. And nobody's on Zoom, if I'm correct, right? Everybody's joined in since? Okay. All right, I'll use my... So then we want to close to the, the public portion of the meeting, and then commission discussion.
Can I, can I ask if the civil engineer would speak to the question about drainage that was raised?
Yeah.
I'll plug in my computer. Morgan couldn't be here tonight, but he did, he has been reviewing, he and the other engineers at the office have been reviewing the proposal, the engineering documents, and they've been working directly with the developer's engineer, and his staff report is included in the packet. So any, any approval of this would be completely conditioned upon approval by the city engineer, but it now occurs to me that perhaps you were asking the developer's engineer to address those questions.
Well, I was.
So let's have them come on up.
Yeah, if there's something to be addressed or prepared to be addressed, yeah.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Patrick Sarver, 4231 Abbott Avenue South in Minneapolis, but I'm the principal at Civil Site Group. Professionally, I am a landscape architect. I'm very familiar, just as a segue, I'm very familiar with the male and female variety and concerns related to the ginkgo tree. The ginkgo is my very most favorite tree. It's excellent, it's hardy in an urban environment, but it filters light in a way that's really beautiful, and so male varieties are exclusively all we use on all of our plans, so, and it's... beautiful, and so male varieties are exclusively all we use on all of our plans, so, and it's just rare that you, anybody else knows the difference, so I do appreciate.
Well, and I wasn't, definitely was not saying no to the Ginkgos, just kind of watch out for the females.
Absolutely.
In this case, the female of the species is more difficult.
Yeah, I have come across a female Ginkgo tree, and it's not pleasant, so, yes. All right. But having been thirty years in the industry, I do, I'm very familiar with civil engineering aspects as well, so I'm not a licensed civil engineer, I just happen to be a president of a company that provides a lot of civil engineering. So we are addressing the drainage characteristics or drainage conditions of the site. We don't trigger a stormwater treatment system for the rules, but we are obligated in order to maintain the drainage patterns and improve the drainage patterns where we can, and so we are doing that and working with the city's engineer in order to achieve those goals. So does that adequately address your question or concern?
I guess, yeah.
You good?
Yeah, and I understand that the city engineer will have involvement with that, so.
Absolutely.
Just kind of a wet area in North St. Paul, so we have a lot of spots where flooding can happen pretty quick, so I think people are always concerned. We have the area by our target that would, that intersection would be up to the roof of cars, so.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that the water is brought carefully and not stuck somewhere.
Well, I think if you look on page fifty-four of 169 of the packet, that's where the stormwater management and sewer design comment, engineering comments are, and there are multiple ones, so it's definitely always a topic of interest in this city.
Excellent.
Yes, good.
Thank you very much, and I'll make myself available for any further questions.
Appreciate it.
John, I got a comment next?
Okay.
Okay, no, not, just another.
Thank you.
Other item. Yeah, and this harks back to one of Andrew's comments about Sepulveda Boulevard and how we want to develop it as a part of the downtown area. I'm wondering if this opportunity is taken, you know, has been looked at, and that is rather than having Sepulveda continue on a diagonal until it hits Helen, have it go due west, curve somewhat due west, and so, so that there'd be some additional land for development. I know that that means there's a parking lot that would be cut short on the other side of the street, but as I understand it, that parking lot is kind of underutilized, and it seems like a real good opportunity to kind of add a little bit of safety features in terms of trucks turning at the corner of Sepulveda and Helen, as well as adding some variety to the interest, to the roadway back there, and also, you know, open an opportunity for perhaps a slightly larger building. You see where I'm talking about? If you were to take the northern corner of the property that they're talking about now and turn Sepulveda due west, there would be a triangle of land that would be available to this property, potentially. Obviously, there's a, there's a private, you know, private company, you know, private owner north of there.
Right.
But there'd be some real safety value, I think, and some additional interests that could come out of that, as well as some perhaps design enhancements to how, how the new development would, you know, connect to Sepulveda.
In our packet, is there a spot that kind of shows that?
If you look at the map.
Let's just, we can bring it up, if you don't mind, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I know it may be late in the process, but it, you know, if we live with a building like this for fifty years, it's certainly worthwhile looking at those kinds of changes that I think could be a real advantage there.
You're saying have it meet Helen like perpendicularly?
Yes, yes, exactly. So that'd, that'd make traffic patterns a lot better, and we'd be cutting into a parking lot, but at the same time, you know, I think there'd be some real value that could come out of that.
Is that Lyons Parking Lot then?
That's Lyons Gate Parking Lot.
Yeah. I don't know if it's too late to try to examine something like that or explore something like that. It, you know, it seems like too good of an opportunity to pass up.
One thing to consider, too, is just connectivity of Sepulveda Boulevard, is do we, as a city, is our vision to keep that, you know, old streetcar line right of way in place? And I know, I think in the northwest quadrant, that's a city pump house for, I think, city drinking water, if I'm not mistaken, so I know we're going to want to be careful with impacts to that.
Where's that at?
I think that's that little brick building.
That little, the little building there, yeah.
Pump house there, okay. Can you go up a little, out a little bit, sorry? Just want to see how much parking that Lyons Gate has, how much they would.
Lyons Gate parking is, I drove past the other day, it's full.
Okay.
During the day.
It is full. Mm-hmm, okay.
I'm sure their enrollment is skyrocketing.
Oh, I'm sure, anything, yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay, so it's, yeah.
We know what you're talking about now, so that's, yeah, we'd cut across there, but yeah, that's quite a few parking spots when you look at, it looks like they come in on Sepulveda, and they also come in the other streets, so they're bumper to, nose to nose for cars there.
Okay, maybe it's the academy that has the extra park.
Yeah, it is.
Seems like something that at least should be explored is, you know, whether there's opportunities there.
I just don't know where their parking would go in that building.
To the academy.
They have to have certain.
It could go to the academy.
Well, the academy already owns that.
Mm-hmm.
Right? That parking lot? Do we know?
Oh, that they use, but they're underutilizing it.
Based on the shape of their, based on the shape of the lot, it's their property, yeah.
Yeah, and they have to have certain amount of parking spots per, for their size building, too.
Yeah, and, you know, in some of the, some of the discussions that I've heard recently, they did talk about significant vacant, you know, land that's basically using, you know, being used for parking. You know, anyway, if this is a possibility, it's, it seems like something that would be worthwhile at least examining a little closer.
And when I saw the picture up there, the lines, are we going to be burying them all the way down Sepulveda or just the new building? Would that be a question? I don't know if that's for.
I think that's probably an engineering question, but it's my understanding that it's going to be at the corner of Sepulveda and Helen to the end of the building. So that would be, yeah.
It looked as though there was a power pole right near the corner of, of this property. I wonder if that's visible on the plan.
Because when you look there, it looks terrible.
What page are you on? The packet?
Well, I was trying to see if it's visible on the survey.
When you went through your slides, you showed the alleyway with the, with the pole and all the wires hanging down.
He's going to, he's going to know.
He knows, Mr. Electric.
Oh, yeah, there's the man.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what we were looking at is, it would have been from, initially, we were looking at from the corner down to the post office, sort of been on the, actually behind the post office building itself, but we're looking at probably burying that, even going further west, so hopefully everything from even North St. Paul Drive to the post office. It becomes much more difficult once you go further east than that, because they actually have some of the electric services go to the middle of the buildings and then drop down inside, so I mean, these are major rewires for these buildings if they had to do something like that.
Yeah.
Plus, buildings are right up to the road. We have nowhere to put transformers or electric cabinets, so it becomes really difficult once you get past that point, but that's the intention right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's very helpful. Definitely got a good staff here. Everybody's ready.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I just had a couple of questions, actually, or comments, and maybe you could bring up, I'm not sure what page it is, but the one, I think that shows the outside of the building? With a little bit of detail, kind of pointing out various things from your, from the report, staff report.
Oh, the one, the one that shows the materials?
Can't remember.
Highlights what the materials are, not, not just the rendered image, not that one.
Page twenty-six.
Actually, that one is probably okay, too.
You want this?
Well, I.
You can show her.
It's good if it can be on the screen for other people.
The rendered, the rendered, the rendered 3D.
Yes.
It's early in the, early in the submission.
Oh, at the very beginning?
Yes.
Yeah, the first rendered image.
Okay. It's hard to navigate when my screen is right here.
Mm-hmm, that one, yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. And, and, just leave this one up here, and I'll ask about this later, but on one of the, I think it was the site plan, one of the plans, it had a comment that all deliveries will be made at the corner there of Helen and Seventh, at that corner of the building, is that correct? I remember seeing that, I don't remember which plan it was. Oh, C, oh, yeah, O2.
I think there's several activities that will engage different parts of the building in regards to deliveries, like a move-in condition, and then daily deliveries. For instance, like on first floor, we'll design a package room, and so there will be trucks that pull up, you know, FedEx and other, that'll be go through the front door of the building. Physical move-ins for the building are likely going to happen from Sepulveda through the garage door.
Correct.
What other deliveries are we going to have? We're going to have.
Delivery there, or we can have delivery here.
Yeah, then dumpsters would go out the north side of the building to Sepulveda, so there'll be several different, I'll call it, delivery points of the building?
So, yeah, because I was mainly interested in the, the commercial aspect of it, because I thought that would be odd to have all deliveries, and it just mentioned FedEx and stuff like that, so I thought that was what was being referred to. I just wanted to make sure the commercial piece is cared for as well.
Right, and the, yes, on the southeast corner of the building, we're depicting the fifteen-hundred square foot approximate commercial space.
Right.
It's likely most of their deliveries would come in through the front door, but they still have the ability, they'll still have the ability to come in through their back door. There's a corridor that goes the whole length of that, back of that space.
Okay.
That they could accept deliveries both ways.
Thanks. You might as well stay there, I should have asked these earlier. And that's where the depiction comes in, I believe. There are two, are there, two entrances near that community room there off of Seventh? It appeared to be there were one on the corner, and then one up just.
Towards the east.
Yeah, toward the east, and that goes into the same space?
It does, because we need handicap accessibility.
That's what I was going to ask about.
So we have the grand staircase coming down to the corner of Helen and Seventh.
Right.
But that's like seven stairs.
Yeah.
We don't want to clutter that up with a handicap ramp, and so what we've designed the building to do is a, a lower entry further north on the.
Further east.
Okay.
East, yep.
East, north.
Northeast, whatever it is.
Okay.
And that comes in at, that comes in at the sidewalk level, and then we'll have a two-sided elevator inside where a handicap person can.
Okay, and it goes into the same space?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The space has not been designed yet, but yes, the intent is, we'll have a grand space in there, and, and that will enter.
Okay. And then I noticed on your parking depictions, the under, the first floor and underground?
Correct.
That, I think the first floor clearly had handicap spots identified. I didn't notice any on the underground.
That's correct.
Depiction.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll have to, we'll have to get some in there.
Okay. Just those little things that sometimes get forgotten.
We do, we do.
How many do we need for a building with this many?
It's all, it's all a percentage.
It's a math of how many dwelling units are.
Probably one, four, five.
How many?
Two percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Per lot. Per floor, anyway. Okay, those were, those were the ones I had specifically about the plans, thanks. I have a question, though, just to bring it up, because I think going forward, it occurred to me, this is a PUD, you know, certainly a special kind of permit, and the live-work portion of this PUD, live-work is a conditional use in the MU district. So my question really was to staff more than anyone else as far as how do those two things work together? Because normally, somebody would need to apply for a conditional use permit, however, they're renting a property, they're not owning it, and it's already under a special kind of development use.
My understanding that the PUD, once granted, will allow for either use at any time. So I believe what the developer is asking for, though, in this particular project, is the flexibility to have either live-work or all residential or all commercial of any of those units at any point in time. So when we draft our resolution, we probably need to take some special care at making sure that that language is included in there, so that they can have the flexibility to have any of those uses, instead of just locking them into one or the other.
You mean in the development agreement?
Yeah, any of the mechanisms that's going to be tied to this particular project.
Yeah.
So the, the conditional use that you're asking about becomes incorporated into the PUD?
That seems to me the way it's, it would be handled, rather than treating it as you would a normal CUP and have to go through the public hearing process and.
Right.
All of that kind of review. I just wanted to try to get that clarified a little bit.
Yeah, so it would be memorialized in this process, either through, like you said, the development agreement or the approval resolution.
Okay. The only comment I have on that is, there is, at least in my mind, it's important that we have some retail on the first floor, and that really is the key of that two-block section of downtown, and that's really the only place we've ever said we want retail on that lower level. So the live-work and the way you've designed it certainly fits in with that, so I would hate to see it go all residential. That's my personal opinion, because I don't think that's what we've been looking for for as many years as I've been around, because that does help invigorate. You know, you don't have people just going home and then driving off somewhere else. You've got people coming and going in and out of the storefronts, and that's why we want the storefront look at the lower level, again, which I think you've done a nice job creating.
Well, there are other stakeholders, city council members, that have voiced the same thing that you have just voiced, and my response to them has been that I would engage a retail-specific real estate broker, and who I've selected is Chad Sturm with Upland Real Estate. He's been here, we've had lunch. I'm going to sign a listing agreement with him. He's going to market the entire space and see how many fish we can reel in, but I can't make, I can't make any guarantees. Hopefully, we can reel in lots of fish, right? If we can't, we're asking for the flexibility to, to fill it in with maybe, you know, those other two uses of live-work, so there's still a retail or a street activity happening in that dwelling unit, and if that doesn't work, then just straight-up residential. So we're asking for a lot of flexibility, but I'm trying to engage and the experts that can help us, you know, get our wish list taken care of, so.
Well, I think that, that would be the priority, too. Full retail would be ideal.
Yeah.
Live-work is good.
One of the challenges is, you know, there's vacancy on this corridor, and I, I don't like to capitalize vacancy, we want to get vacancy filled. They're going to be able to offer cheaper rent than we're going to be able to offer, but regardless, we'll make our best efforts forward to get that use, as much of that use as we can.
Thanks.
You'll have that flexibility if it's a bigger place, like a grocery store, someone wants to move in, you have, you can make it so as large as what is needed. It could be the whole entire bottom, or it could be split up into different things for retail.
Well, that's going to be a bit of a challenge, take that whole bottom, we're just, the parking, we need to make sure we're parked correctly. It all kind of is a big function, it's a bubble.
Whatever, you know.
Right, we can change the orientation of what that first floor looks like to accommodate other uses and still have some of it parked, but it's just the, you know, you keep moving the bubble around and it just.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I do have a question about the live-work units, and that is just how flexible they're going to be as far as the. going to be as far as the services that are needed. For example, let's say that you have a potter move into one of the units, and he wants to have a kiln in there, so he can do his own firing, and then display his works, and live there. You know, are, have you planned for that type of eventuality, or are they're going to be, are they going to be somewhat more restricted because of them being in a large residential building?
Well, I think there's opportunity for mechanical and venting systems to get routed through the building in different ways. We've done it creative, we've gone through the front of buildings with grates, and we've gone through the parking garage with exhausts for those types of uses, but not having anything specific yet.
Right, right, no, I understand, I just wanted to make sure.
But that building will offer a lot of flexibility.
Okay.
The other buildings that we've done that have mixed uses in them, you know, day one, regardless of what, what goes in first floor, we build shafts through the building that go all the way through the roof, that can accommodate, you know, restaurant equipment and other venting things, so you don't, you're not going in and ripping a building apart to, you know, later, after those uses are identified.
You, you actually have an advantage in that regard because of the setback. I think that setback design, I, I really will comment very favorably about the setback, that the way it's been created, it does a lot of great things for the massing of it on the, on Seventh.
Thank you.
And it gives you the opportunity to do exactly what Cameron was asking, because you could, you could punch up through that deck with a, with a vent of some sort if you had to.
Yep.
I don't know if we'll be able to allow all types of uses, like.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Transmission place?
Within limits.
No auto body shops in the, I'm going to write down some ideas, I mean, like, when I started the firm, this would, this is exactly what I would have looked for, something that is small and affordable, and I can grow from it. This is, it's, it's an incubator. These are, these are incubator spaces, and that's exactly what I would have looked for if it was available at the time when I started my architecture.
Yeah, just. And that's what ties back to the height, too. We wanted to make sure, not just from a, you know, from a retail perspective, get a nice volume, so that you feel really generous in there, right? You're not in a cramped seven-foot ceiling, and, and the ability to put a mezzanine in, that, you know, you can segregate sleeping and, you know, quiet study for your, and then, you know, first floor with those activities. So that's why we set it at 20 feet. So we have, what, nine-foot ceilings and nine-foot ceilings? With a 12-inch structure in that, inside that 20 feet.
Okay, thanks.
You could always market to basketball players, too.
That's true, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make one other, just one other comment, and that's just really on the staff information, and it's, it's not impacting, at least my thinking on this particular item, but it is on going forward, as we have other things, we have, you know, items we want to fix in some degree or discuss in our code, and that has to do with the, the comment about the parking, and the one space per dwelling unit for multi-use. That's not a requirement, that's just that we're encouraging people to do that. The requirement is still what's in the zoning table. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, that it's just an encouragement, it's not a standard. But we do have, and that does impact this one, we do have bike bonuses if you provide bike parking, and we have bo, you know, bonuses, I'll call it that, or reductions in the parking requirements, if somebody does do underground, because we want to limit, you know, the amount of ground space that's used solely for parking, and we want to encourage multimodal. We also have a little bonus if there's an entrance within 300 feet of transit, which you happen to have. So those, all of these things work together, and I just think when, and I'm off track here, but when we go and look at our off-street parking, we really have to bring this all together, so it, it kind of all meshes and everybody understands it, you know, because there's, there is a requirement, but we also have, we've already put flexibility, tried to put flexibility into the code, we just haven't done it very well, or understandably, maybe. So I just wanted to make that editorial comment.
Yes, it does cover a lot of different situations. Anybody else? Well, then I will recommend a motion, right?
You're going to ask for a motion?
I'm going to ask for a motion first, you said, right? I told you I'm new. Ask for a motion.
I move for approval?
Can I make a minor clarification? I think approval with the condition that we're, hmm, how, how do I put this? In response to the revised plan that, that the applicant has put forth tonight, showing the fitness center, and the related pedestrian connections on that, what would be north and northwest corner? I think that should be incorporated as part of the recommendation.
The changes they made?
Yes. If that's acceptable.
Sure.
Could somebody repeat that?
Yeah, could somebody phrase that?
I mean, if you look at the draft resolution, on page 57 of 69, there are already five conditions, so let's get those added to that. I would recommend.
57.
To make it complete.
So after the council meeting, you got together and made the changes, that's what we're talking about on this right now. Ahead of time, so.
So how did you word that, Patrick?
So it would become the sixth condition?
Mm-hmm.
Incorporate the modifications to the floor plan and building elevations associated with adding the fitness center to the northwest corner of the building, and, and the associated changes to pedestrian access to the exterior. How about that?
I like that. That about describes what you guys did, right?
That's correct, yeah, I was going to offer if, if it helps, we could just leave the document that we showed you here, and that could be incorporated.
That would be very helpful.
That help?
That'd be great. Appreciate it.
I don't think there was anything else, was there? So Cameron, your motion is to approve, recommend the council approve.
Recommend the council approve with the.
The PUD for 2503 to 25177 Avenue East.
Right, with the additional recommendations.
Right, based on the conditions, or based on, actually, the draft resolution.
All right, we got, anybody second?
I would second. Go for it.
Okay.
Go for it.
Andrew, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's. Say that.
When's it going to the council?
We're looking to take. We're looking to take it at the second meeting this month, so I believe that's the 20th.
Does that give them time to do all the rework on the very site plans and, based on the engineering?
Any, any approval by the city council is going to be contingent on complete approval by the city engineer.
Okay. Nice job.
Do we have to separately review the resolution regarding the next?
Now we do B.
Yep, thank you.
Item B?
Completely locked up.
Are you up to item B?
I'm to paper now, so.
Oh, good.
Goodbye, computer. Glad you still know school.
I, that's the reason I do it.
Thank you. Don't trust computers, I second that motion.
At least I can write on it.
Well, you can write on this if you want. Okay, publicating, hearing to consider the comprehensive, do you have anything on that?
Do you have a presentation?
Awesome, thank you.
Hopefully, my computer is going to.
Yeah, don't let it look at mine.
Okay, so, oh. So I have a presentation for this, and then also for the zoning text, would you like me to stop in between these two? Okay. So as, as we had mentioned earlier, the anticipated density for the development project, that's requesting the comp plan amendment is 110 dwelling units per acre. And also, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, downtown mixed-use land use district envisions the density for that district, or that land use designation, is up to 22 dwelling units per acre. So therefore, we're asking for the comp plan amendment, and so what the proposal is in your packet is to create a density bonus in a very site-specific way for up to 110 units per acre with city council approval. So the, the amendment in the packet has language that basically strikes out that, you know, 22-acre maximum, and allows for this density bonus, and the area in question is the project area. If we were going to create a density bonus for another area within the downtown, we would have to come forward with another comp plan amendment to update the zoning map, I'm sorry, the comp plan future land use map. This is my first foray with the Met Council. My supervisor, Kim, and I had a discussion with, I forget the gentleman's name, but the person who's your regional liaison with the council, advised that we do it in this manner to potentially go with an administrative amendment, as opposed to having to take it to, forward to the whole Met Council. It's not going to result in a region-wide review of your stormwater, sorry, not stormwater, but your sewer, sanitary sewer capacity. And we also had our city engineer look at this, the impacts of this particular project, and he found that it would institute maybe a 1% increase in your overall wastewater flow, which, in his word, is de minimis, and doesn't warrant an amendment to the utility chapter of the comp plan. So to sum up, the amendment is to create a density bonus option in the text, and then also update the map, and it would be specifically at this, at this point in time for this project. And any, any future amendments would have to go, again, through a comprehensive plan amendment, if we're going to change the map again, and potentially a complete engineering analysis, if we're going to go take it broader, that density bonus idea, take it, you know, throughout your whole downtown. So that would trigger a much, a much deeper dive into the sanitary sewer capacity. So that is the conclusion of that, and I could stand for any questions.
Does the resolution as drafted identify specifically, it, it states specific properties, or?
The resolution, the, sorry.
Oh, is it written?
Okay, let me find that page.
It doesn't specifically point out this piece of property.
The map points out the piece.
The map does, but the resolution doesn't.
Well, the resolution addresses it both, because that's what's approving the comp plan amendment, it's approving the text and the map. But the intention of the text is to provide a density bonus for wherever it might be drawn on the map, and at this point, it's only going to be drawn in one spot.
Oh, I see, okay, understood. I, I wanted to figure out the connection between the specific piece of property and the, and the narrative of the resolution.
Yeah.
It's the map, that's the tool.
Yeah, do you know what the page is on the, in the?
Uh, the resolution is on 60, 6-0.
Yeah, so Exhibit A shows what the actual text is for the amendment, and I also, it looks like I updated the fact that we did do an updated redevelopment master plan.
Oh, yeah.
And then, yeah, so it, it discusses map 4.4, which is your future land use map. So areas depicted on that map that are shown as eligible for density bonus can have that density bonus, and then we go to the land use table and the.
And the map.
The density maximums, so that's where you can get the, the flexibility. If you're so lucky to be one of those mapped areas, which in this case, they would.
So if.
So when you're talking about any additional lots that would be identified, would also require a text amendment, are you really saying that it would just require an amendment to the map?
Uh, yes.
Because the text wouldn't need to change?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and so that's something probably that you're going to want to think about in the not-too-distant future, because I think these are going to be coming forward. So a proactive approach on how to handle future such requests.
If, if we were to assign, say, you know, we'll, we'll assign a density bonus based on providing, you know, less parking, or car sharing, or, you know, some, if there was some, like an ask we were making, that would then allow the density bonus to be received, would that, like, that sort of system would, would open us up to a broader Met Council study, is that what I'm understanding?
No, no, I think what I'm saying, and again, this is my first time with Met Council, I, I believe what is going to trigger any, a real strenuous review by Met Council is if their sanitary system is impacted, and so the more units that you have, so if you were going to open up this density bonus to your entire downtown, they have to look at all of the possible unit, I forget what they call them, SAC or WAC units.
SAC, yeah.
And so the worst-case scenario, or best-case scenario, however you look at it, in terms of density, so maybe that's like 12,000 units that you could possibly put in your downtown, how is that going to impact the, the sanitary system? A lot, and we might not be prepared for that, therefore, they may not be willing to do a comp plan amendment of this caliber without having a more intensive water sewer system study.
Okay.
Randy, you mentioned more, more of these might be coming.
Mm-hmm.
If in the future, another one of these comes up where we, we want to do a density bonus, could we go through this same administrative review process, or at what point is there a trigger of we have to go through a formal?
I don't know if I'm experienced enough to answer that question. I would hope that if we can do it once, we can do it twice. I think that we need to be proactive as staff, first, when speaking with development, developers on, you know, initial opportunities, that this is a step that they're going to have to go through. But yeah, as we think about, you know, we want to densify the downtown, now that, now, now we know that this is a, a pinch point, so we can start looking at it as a group, and try to figure out what the best approach is.
Just picking up on what Andrew said, and that has to do with having some kind of idea of what criteria, you know, you would use to make that call, on yes, this is a project that we'd want to give the bonus to, and then maybe, you know, it adds value here.
Mm-hmm.
And I do think that's something to think about, not that it has to be part of this, but I do think there's merit in having some kind of idea.
Well, the way that it's written doesn't limit you from having that flexibility. It does say with council approval, so we can, we would come to planning commission for a recommendation. You would recommend whatever you think is appropriate, and then hopefully, council.
Well, I know, you know what I'm saying, though, I mean, it's nice to just have, it might be a discussion we want to have.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that.
Add that to our list.
I'm a little concerned with the 110 cap on this, because if I'm understanding right, that's based on this building, right?
Yep.
Now, and I understand, I may be incorrect on this, but do I remember reading somewhere that the city had talked about encouraging up to five-story buildings in the downtown area? And if that's the case, then maybe we should take a look at this as if this were, how many units would be in a five-story building built like this, and use that as an upper number, so that we don't have to come back every time, you know, if somebody were to come in with a slightly larger building than this. But like I say, I may be, I may be mistaken on that, so.
I would say that that's a, a good idea in terms of evaluating a future amendment beyond the scope of this project, just because I think, like you were saying, criteria would be useful. At this point, anybody that would want to come forward with a density bonus would have to do a comp plan amendment anyways for the, for the map. So I think in the meantime, we can come up with a more. So I think in the meantime, we can come up with a more.
Flexible number.
Yeah, a little bit more scientific analysis of how to handle these.
Because I was just thinking that that way, we wouldn't have to keep coming back every single time.
Right.
We could just use the same amendment for, because it's tied into the map, so.
Yeah, I think it just, I think ideally, we'd want to do this in a way where it's not saying just this property.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, I understand the reasoning behind it, and I think, you know, like you said, it's probably something we want to review moving forward here because there should be, you know, everyone should have the same rules applied, right? So I understand the reasoning for this now, and I think the way you've laid it out, it makes sense as you have it. But it would be great for the next one that we actually have a more, you know, a plan, a little bit more, a better plan to be able to apply a density bonus. Because it, I think, I mean, we're going to need that for sure. And density bonuses are pretty common things, but they're usually tied to something that you can say, okay, well, if you want this density bonus, you have to, you know, have 20% affordable or whatever the, you know, category would be, so. But I think, you know, that's probably moving forward rather than.
I think with our building boom, we're learning a lot as we go, which isn't bad. So we're learning.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions? Well, we're open to the public. Any questions or anybody would like to elaborate on anything out there, the public input? Everybody good? All right, then I will close the discussion and commission discussion. Anybody on the commission have anything to bring up? We've been bringing them up as we go along.
Yeah.
But I have to ask.
I know. Probably should have waited. Shouldn't have brought it up.
I'm a rule follower tonight, so.
Yeah.
I'm doing good.
Got to get it all in.
All right, commission, nothing? All right. So the next is, oh, here we go.
We need to take some action now.
That's what I'm just going to do.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought you were going to go on to the next one.
So any recommendation as far as being able to, for the council for this amendment?
You know what? Now I have a question. All of a sudden, because I just read this and I realized, so this, we're only talking about the downtowns, so we are only talking about the MU1?
Mm-hmm.
We are, not the MU2 or MU3?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
Well, we're not talking about zoning at all, actually. It's downtown mixed use. It's the pink on the future land use map.
Any mixed?
No, I'm sorry, hold on.
I'm just trying to clarify. It says in the downtown, so what do we mean by in the downtown?
Like you said, it's the pink on the comp plan map.
Let me look and see what I actually did here. So, yeah, it's only in the pink on the downtown. So the, within the downtown mixed-use land use category, that is the only area that the density bonus would apply as it's currently presented.
Right.
Downtown mixed use.
Yeah. Just making sure that we know where it is. Okay.
Did we also want to change the 110 unit per acre to some other appropriate number that would be more universal?
Well, I feel like if we're going to have to revisit this next time anyway, might as well just keep it at, you know, because it really is only applying to this project, so.
At this point, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Don't want to open a can of worms too early.
Right.
There are too many unknowns, I'm thinking, in that regard.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll recommend that council approve, council approval of a comprehensive plan amendment to create a density bonus for certain land in the downtown mixed use. I added mixed use to your resolution. Subject to the approval conditions in the draft resolution.
Second.
Second by Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Forwarded, offer plate. All right, C. You're back up again.
Okay, final topic related to this project, zoning text amendment. Okay, so the last item that they're requesting flexibility for is the building height. And as I mentioned, the PUD ordinance pretty much sets it to match the underlying zoning district building height, which means that 50 feet is what is required. So the simple text amendment, looks like I have it right there on the screen, is to just add, building height is, one of the things that you can have is flexibility within the PUD. So Section 2, where it says in building height, height limitation shall be the same as imposed by the prospective zoning district, so I said unless flexibility is granted for building height per referring back up to G up above. So a fairly simple amendment, going to open up a lot of opportunity for flexibility with this, because if we're going to keep wanting to increase density in the downtown, we're going to need to allow for taller buildings potentially. That is it? Oh, I'm sorry, that is not it. There is criteria that you have to consider. So is it consistent with the comp plan? Is it going to adversely affect health, safety, and welfare? Is it going to be compatible with the future, present uses as it relates to the overall needs of the city? Is it compatible with adjacent properties? And can it be supported by urban services? And finally, is it consistent with the overall adopted city plans? So related to items 1 and 2, we reviewed the proposal and found that it is consistent with the comp plan goals now that we've amended our comp plan. And additionally, creating the flexibility for building height will help the city achieve its goal of commercial uses on the street level based on the needed, you know, structural height for commercial uses and also the multifamily housing and density expectations. The amendment's not intended to or expected to negatively affect health, safety, and welfare. Related items 3 through 6, it is compatible with the overall needs of the city, especially those areas that are zoned mixed use. Okay, and important to note that if any development does wish to pursue the building height flexibility under this new PUD, it's going to be analyzed individually to make sure it is compatible with your land uses, your existing and your future land uses before it's constructed. And that process will also ensure that it will not negative impact, negatively impact the surrounding land use and also be supported by city services. So the point is that anything that's going to be coming forward through a PUD review is going to be thoroughly evaluated. So adding this one additional flexibility is not going to negatively impact the intent of the zoning ordinance. So recommendation is, this is the recommendation for all of those different projects, I had it kind of combined into one. We've already been through the planned unit development and the comp plan. We also recommend approval of the zoning text amendment. And any questions?
I think it makes sense.
Okey-dokey.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will get open to the public. Anybody would like to speak on it? Anybody? All right, I will close it to the public. Commission, any discussion with us up here? All right, we're good to go. Somebody would like to make a recommendation?
Okay, I make a motion that we recommend the council approve the zoning text amendment to add building height to the flexibility from ordinance requirements in the planned unit development district.
Anybody a second? A second? Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. Care of that. Thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you for the great design and appreciate everything you're doing. Commission, what is this, commission business items? All right, next, commission business, action items, recommendations, review the amendment to, was it, to Randy again, if you don't mind?
Yep, I'd be happy to. This proposed amendment was brought to my attention by Chairwoman Barton a couple of months ago, and I finally had some time to look into it after the sign ordinance and the redevelopment master plan were done. And basically, this is categorized as a cleanup of Chapter 32 based on some actions that were taken with updating Chapter 32, I think, years ago related to the zoning ordinance. So the purpose of the update for tonight's purposes is to clarify the powers and duties of the planning commission, that they include the review of variances as the Board of Appeals and Adjustment as is permitted under statute, also review, sorry, reaffirm the planning commission and the park and rec commissions role, and the review of the capital improvement plan for consistency with the comprehensive plan. Eliminate the section of the chapter dealing with the environmental advisory commission because that body has been disbanded, and then just to update any, update to remove any typographical errors. And that is all.
I believe the environmental advisory commission is on hiatus. It's, uh, different from.
We no longer have.
Well, you mean they might come back?
No. Uh, Brian?
I mean, it's on hiatus, so I, that to me means it's.
It's been disbanded for quite a while, so I have not heard of them coming.
I haven't heard of a decision one way or the other.
Same.
I don't know, but Brian's here, maybe he has some insight.
Environmental Advisory Commission?
What?
That's on hiatus.
Chattering away in the back.
We're discussing amending Chapter 32, which is boards, commissions, boards and commissions of the city. And one of those is the environmental advisory commission. And so the recommended amendment of this ordinance is to delete that section of the code talking about that commission because it was our understanding that they were no longer a commission, but now they might just be on hiatus, so now we're wondering.
I have not heard any updates because I've even heard that they tried to blend it into planning at one time for some parts of it, but it kind of filtered away. Do you, have you heard anything more recent than?
No, my understanding it's on hiatus until there's a decision or a direction made with it, but as I understand it, it's just.
And they had issues of filling the committee to have any kind of quorum. That's been quite a while. I was actually on that committee once upon a time.
Okay, well, with that in mind.
Maybe, it's been on hiatus since, what, 2016 or 17, something like that? So, I mean, that's an extent, that's a decision, obviously, I think, needs to be made on whether it's going to be reinvigorated or whether it's just going to be disbanded.
Or absorbed or whatever.
Or the duty's absorbed, you know, elsewhere, but maybe at this point, we don't, we don't, we strike that piece and don't eliminate it if the council hasn't even had a discussion about it.
No, and I think that would be the appropriate step is to, we can bring it up and we can have a council discussion or a workshop discussion to see what the view is and see if there is interest in, if we can get enough people to form a committee on that. It's a good idea.
I also want to make a note that, and I don't know for sure, but there was another commission that was disbanded and there were some legal documents that needed to get filed. So we'll have to look in the matter as well.
Legal.
Okay, great.
So what we would do then would just delete the 32 dot four five change, right? We wouldn't, that's the environmental advisory commission, right?
So Section 2 of the ordinance on page 68.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just wouldn't, we'd eliminate that from the recommendation.
You wouldn't delete any of the items shown as deleted in Section 2?
Right.
Yeah, we would just take Section 2 out of the proposed ordinance.
Amending it, okay, thanks.
Eva, thank you.
Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll add to our recommendation that the council make a decision on the environmental advisory commission.
CPR.
Would that be a problem if we did that, Lisa?
Sorry, you had to miss that.
If we made a recommendation that the council make a decision on the environmental advisory commission?
Excuse me, I just have a question. Is this gentleman our new city manager or is he still the interim?
He's the guy.
I don't know when it's effective.
You're taking it away from her.
Don't take it away.
Oh, that was it, so I think, so now you make a motion then, or did we already just do that?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
We were about to.
It's coming. Or if I take that off.
Okay, so then the bullet three on your staff report too, then we take that out of the staff report. They eliminate the, dealing with the advisory.
Yep.
Environmental advisory.
Yeah. So it's kind of an edited version, amended version.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, Patrick makes a motion.
To recommend to the council to, I'm just looking, getting the words right.
Amen, chapter?
To amend Chapter 32 of boards and commissions with, as recommended in the draft, to make corrections, various corrections, with the exception of item 3, did you say it was?
Section.
Section 2.
Item 3, Section 2, not deleting Section 2 as part of the recommendation. Take it as so.
Sorry, just to clarify that for future purposes, how about we say not eliminate the environmental?
Not eliminate the environmental advisory commission. Yes, yes, that would be more appropriate, more specific.
Until such time as the council makes a decision.
Okay, Elaine.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, Patrick, second in my lane, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amended, amended. All right, I will move on. So old business reports from staff. Do we have any right now?
Boy.
No one quick, didn't they?
Like I gave you all my reports.
I know, you're probably worn out by now.
You reported out.
Yes. Anything you'd like, anybody like to add? Looking at you down there.
I don't have any stuff.
All right, let's check it. Are you good?
Nothing's coming to mind.
Okay, if you think of something later, just pop up, no problem. All right, this is you, kid. Reports from council liaison.
All right.
Please sit down, your floor.
Well, as you may have known, the council has been pretty occupied with finding a new city manager. I'm very pleased to say that the council has chosen our interim city manager, Brian Frandl, who is also our electric director. His leadership is something special. He has a lot of institutional knowledge and great relationships, so I think it's going to be really positive for our community and, yeah, welcome.
Oh, good.
All right.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
He's now institutionalized?
Yes.
Sorry, I got like less important, like less big news. So the fall parade is on September 15th at 6:30, I believe, and they're still in need for some volunteers, if that's of interest to folks. Council has also been pretty busy with budget workshops around the cap role improvement plan and working with the directors and the finance director. And I think that's it. Thank you.
A lot of good stuff you brought us, thank you so much. Any reports from any of the commissioners?
Nothing from me.
Nothing, nothing, Rick, nothing, or Lane?
Well, yeah.
All right.
Of course. I don't know if anybody has gone by the, the house on Eldridge that's going to be the student-built one, the one that's going to be torn down, that we just, the council just approved not that long ago, but they're starting, they are starting to work on it, so they've torn off a lot of the exterior, I don't know what comes next, but they're digging in already. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and it really just relates to our earlier public hearings and the project, the PUD process, and I, I'm just going to encourage going forward that as much as possible, we try to, if there's a concept plan that is brought to the city, that we follow, you know, the process that we put in code as a planning commission, that they can bring it to the planning commission as a whole to get input prior to, you know, spending a lot of money on doing design work and stuff. And I, that occurred to me when there was the joint council and EDA chair and vice chair and planning commission chair and vice chair, and as John and I both agreed, we can't speak for the planning commission. There was virtually no reason for us to be there because it's going to come to us as a, I think we're going to have to make a decision on. So I think it would have been good if that process could have been followed. And it would come to the, it can go to the council, it can also go to the planning commission just for initial input on the concept plan, to give them a heads up for, oh, these are things you might want to look out for. So I'm just going to pass that on because I think it just makes the job harder for everybody, and sometimes it has caused problems in the past when people have not understood, oh, that's probably not going to fly. So anyway, I just wanted to share that as a process issue.
Got a wealth of knowledge up here, so that's good.
And happy Labor Day.
Oh, there you go. Patrick?
I do, I do have something to ask about, well, I would like to make comment as it relates to one of the public comments today and the, what we had heard from some residents with regard to the Shifsky property. Shortly after those comments were made about the Shifsky property, I specifically went there to take a look, I actually took some pictures. When I went there, there were workers working on that new equipment. So my impression was they were not done at that time, they were not done in even installing and making that equipment functional. And so it was difficult to judge, were they going to paint it, were they, you know, what were they going to do to finish the project? The other, the other thing that I looked at, actually two other things I noticed, three other things. One was the fencing, the fencing was in fact finished in the manner that had been conditioned on the approval. If, depending on how you look at the fencing, it can be quite opaque or it can be quite transparent, it depends on where you are and the direction you're looking. So they, they did install fencing in the manner that was prescribed. There is some old, really ratty-looking fencing there that I think does not belong to Shifsky. That is adjacent to the gateway trail, that's all kind of shredded and that, but I think that might be part of the gateway trail. Not sure about that. I did notice that on, mounted on the equipment were some lights. The new tall towers were some lights. One of the conditions that was discussed when we did the approvals, the recommendation for approval, which I believe was a 520-21 public hearing and a 630-21 continuation, those were the dates that I had when we reviewed that project. There was specific reference to the fact that site lighting was not going to change. So if there's lighting on the equipment, that might be an issue that the city could go back and say, hey, wait a minute, you weren't going to change lighting. The, the individuals who spoke, the public comments specifically did talk about lighting, site lighting, when they spoke. So that's, that's an issue. The other thing that I noticed, viewing from the west in through the opening in the, in the fence, it appeared as though there was a building, a new building. There was no building approval in my recollection.
That came through as a building permit?
Came through as a building permit, not part of the equipment, site storage. Okay, and the building permit was approved based on, okay, okay, understood.
What was the permit for? And what, what's the building for?
A scale house.
Pardon me?
A scale house?
Yeah, it's a small little building, yeah. Yeah, okay, I just was wondering about that because that was not part of the approval that we went through.
Okay, um, do you think there's anything that we need to look into?
I think the lighting for sure, but also the fact that they were going to finish the equipment.
Well, yes, they, that end of the week used equipment.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone was aware of that when we approved it.
I mean, some of their equipment is painted and looks finished, and this stuff is all rusty and ugly, and I think that it would be, it would be, shall we say, I would strongly encourage that they finish it.
Yeah, I've been wondering if, if that, you know, if the arts commission was involved in, in that, if that was kind of holding things up or, or not, it isn't.
It's been discussed, and I'm not sure how we were going to go about enforcing that, and I don't know if we can enforce it because it was recommended, it wasn't something that we have to do, but we could strongly encourage, and I guess we'll have to, I'll talk with Brian and then I'll give him when we need to try to move forward with that and that. I'll get guidance from Brian as far as what direction we need to go with that.
At, at minimum, I would hope they would paint it.
Yeah, refresh.
You know, because it really does look pretty crummy.
Yeah.
A little refresh of the other.
So I do have the contact, the information for the people that were there that night, I still have a record of their contact information. They have not been contacted directly, but Brandy has been working with Shifsky to ensure that what, what you approved or what you recommended is, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, I guess by work with, what I did was I, I did a site review like you did, I walked around the perimeter of it and tried to compare it to the site plan that was approved plus the resolution that was approved, and I found the same that you did. I didn't notice the new building because that wasn't on my radar, but one thing that was missing was landscaping, I didn't see that they had installed any new landscaping there. Yeah, it didn't look like, it looked like whatever was there was not purposefully put there along the gateway trail side. And, yeah, there was no public art, even though, like you said, it's not mandated. And then I think there was some question about whether or not they had supplied all the necessary approval documents from other agencies.
The pollution.
Yeah, so I, I sent them just a follow-up letter, code enforcement letter, I don't think there was a deadline on it.
I thought it was the end of September.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, I, I guess from this point, I would look for direction from the city on if I need to move forward with any more action on that.
I just have a question about the, that new building that was built. I, my understanding with the, you know, I, I know they have a very unique agreement or, you know, conditional use permit there, but I think part of the conditions were that they could not expand, because I know we talked about that when they were talking about the new equipment, and we talked about how that new equipment was not technically expanding, it was, I, I forget how it was phrased, but there was some way where it wasn't expanding, but, I mean, I guess it's not really our purview, but I just, I'm surprised that they're adding, because that seemed like something that was not part of the agreement, but...
Yeah, that's not ringing a bell with me, but I can double-check to see what the resolution language was again.
Okay.
So, I'm curious, it looks like there's been stuff happening on this, how does the people that bring it up, how do they know that there's action, we're looking into it?
I'm not entirely sure that they were demanding follow-up, but...
Usually when people bring things, they, you know, when they do something, then it's, you know, is there, because as we can see, there's been work behind the scenes and things happening, and there's, I don't think they, they thought their, their concerns were even addressed. So to me, that's just a, how, how the city looks, is, you know, is it just a quick...
It's definitely a step that we're missing, there's no policy or procedure. I would have imagined that would have been something that the community development director previously had done, along with following through on these projects.
Sure.
You know, there's definitely a void in staff.
Can I just add something?
It's all the image of it, you know, the work is done, people are working hard on it, the, yes, thank you, it's, it's, you know, people need to know in the city. That's awesome. Yes.
At some point in time, I was going to wait until Brandy, until we followed through with that deadline of September 30th, I know it was the late, late September, and then figure out what our next step is.
Can I, can I just add something about the group of people that came in to talk about that that night? They had just been with me in a workshop or an open house for the downtown redevelopment plan, and so the conversation within that room kind of evolved into, you know, some of their perspectives about the downtown, and a lot of them live downtown, and so the Shifty, Shifsky's came up, and, and they, they then realized, oh, there's a planning commission meeting right now, we'll just go in and talk to them about this concern that we just raised amongst ourselves.
And I can tell when they came up that that wasn't normal for them, so.
Yeah.
They were, you know, timid and, you know, spoke, so we just want to make sure that they know that we're listening. That's the biggest thing of any business, anything you do, you know, is making sure we get back to people, and I know staff is very stretched right now, hopefully we can get some more help with that, but, you know, it's a whole optic of being able to understand that, yep, because there's good, good stuff happening behind the scenes, but the city is talking and saying, well, nobody ever follows up on anything, so how does that look for what we're doing, even though we're working hard, people don't know it.
I'm just wondering if, what it would take to establish a citywide policy of when somebody comes into a commission or city council meeting and raises a point that we follow up with a, a letter like 30 days or 60 days down the road just to say, yes, we listened, this is what's going on, so.
Just an email to give a little update, so we know we're moving. Great, well, thank you.
I like that idea, there's going to have to be a policy put in place and some combination, I will say, we have some people that continuously, and it will be getting a letter every week.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Well, and it doesn't necessarily mean anything that comes up needs.
Right, yeah.
Further research, but when it is something that needs further research or somebody to look into it, then, then it is appropriate to let people know we are doing something, we are looking at it.
Believe me, I don't want to burden city staff members because I know that, you know, if you don't have somebody that contacts you almost every day on some topic, you're lucky, because I've worked in other agencies where we would frequently hear from the same person three or four times a week with the exact same complaint, so I...
Thank you. Eric, anything, bud?
Yeah, did you say, going back to the Shifsky plant, was there a component of your correspondence where you talked about air quality permits from the Pollution Control Agency?
No, I wouldn't have done that, I would have only referenced the, what the resolution had stated and that they needed to comply with providing whatever permits their resolution had requested to the city, and that's above and beyond my area of expertise.
And I may have misspoken, and I thought that was one of the documents that wasn't on file.
Well, it might have been, it might have been, so I simply would have referenced, the rev, resolution says X for you to provide to the city, this is a reminder if you haven't done, so make sure you do it.
Sure, no, I just, maybe it's more of a code enforcement issue, too, I just thinking through like M.D.O. jobs where dust control is a big part of, on our construction sites, dust control is a big part of it, and we do that for a reason, and I can't cite, whether it's an air quality permit from the PCA, I don't know, I just know that that's, we're very, we want to be good stewards and good neighbors, and that's, I don't know the mechanism for the proper way to, to make sure they're meeting all the air quality rules that need to be met, maybe it's not through that tactic that you were talking about.
I, I'm not sure if, if there is a code enforcement officer with the city, that might be the first stop. I'm, I'm not entirely sure, maybe the MPCA, if that's the right acronym, would be the entity.
I think that's what the document was, was, so then, we can look into that.
Just throwing it out there. And then the other thing, my annual shameless plug for the Minnesota Water Resources Conference, I serve on the planning committee for it, so we're putting that together, registration's open now through, the conference is October 18th and 19th this year, so, it's in-person, by popular demand, it's in-person in St. Paul River Center this year, so.
It's in St. Paul, you said?
St. Paul River Center, correct.
Nice, good deal.
We're excited, so, come, come if you're interested, it's always a good time, learn a lot about water resources across this great state, so.
We've got plenty of it.
It's awesome. Hopefully. Thank you.
Cameron, anything?
Nope.
Okay. I don't have anything right now, so I am going...
Well, you know what, now you're talking about conferences, the Minnesota Planning Association has a conference this month, too, I think it's this month, in Duluth.
Oh, really?
Are you going?
No, I'm going to go to the Wisconsin Planning Association.
Are you defecting?
Sure. Talk to the neighbors.
That one's in, across.
And that's up, you know where it is? What'd you say? And then you're...
Duluth.
Duluth?
Yeah, Duluth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's open to anybody that wants to go, yeah, for sure. I, I would recommend it. Often, at least, I, I don't know about Minnesota, but the state of Wisconsin has like a planning commissioner workshop or training that the, the extension office for UW has options for, and we had that in River Falls where we had the, like a class that was held for newbies for planning commission or board of appeals. So I, if they have something like that, I haven't heard of it yet, but it might be kind of a nice thing to have.
Good thing to have.
And that date one more time?
Oh, I don't know, because I'm not going, it's at the end of the month. It's on Kim's calendar. Why did you bring it up? Because it's planning commission and it's, sorry.
I'll, I'll email that.
You want a nice weekend in Duluth?
On an unknown date, in case you want to...
Nice weekend in Duluth, yeah. See if we can find it.
I'll, I'll be quiet.
I can squeeze that in.
I'll email that to everyone.
Well, thank you, thank you, you're the best.
Okay, I'll, I move, will you adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Adjourned at 8:37.
8:37, in 58 seconds.
Um, Lisa?